Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting, called and convened this July the 13th, 2015. This constitutes the first meeting of 2015 for us, and we thank you for joining us as we begin this new legislative year. We have the pleasure of having Troop 107 with us this evening, or at least part of Troop 107 with us this evening. They are a Boy Scout troop that is located and headquartered over at Greer Memorial United Methodist Church, and I had the honor of meeting with them last night and sharing with them in regards to their citizenship badge work, and it was a delightful visit and a good group of young men. And I have issued them a challenge to become involved in our community, and hopefully they will have an opportunity to do that in the near future. Mark Green is their leader, and I am going to ask that Mark and the young men from Troop 107 if they would to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and following the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will remain standing, Councilwoman Kimberly Booker will pronounce our invocation. Troop 107, the floor is yours.
God, we come before you as humble as we know how, thanking you and praising you for yet another year that you've allowed us to live and to see another day. God, we ask that you bless this sitting, we ask that you bless this meeting, anything that is said and done let it be in your will, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Council, in your packet this -- oh, excuse me. We set aside a time for public forum. That is an opportunity for the public to address council relative to matters that are on the agenda this evening. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear in public forums?
No, sir.
Having no one, we will move to the minutes of the council meeting. There are two to consider this evening, council. Before you, you have the minutes from December the 9th, 2014. This was a workshop meeting. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Any items of note for the clerks? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes.
Counsel, then we have the minutes from the December 9th meeting, the regular meeting from December 9th, 2014. I'll entertain a motion that they be received. I have a motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Danah?
Yes.
It is indeed my honor this evening to recognize one of our employees as they've reached the milestone with their important city of Greer, and this is a special occasion for us on one that people call special. This special because he has done a very special job to us, and I'd like to ask Don Holloman if he would come up. Don has served for the past seven years as our city engineer, and what we want to do is make official that recognition of all the many different ways that you have helped us and guided us, and this certificate of appreciation says congratulations on your retirement with the city of Greer. It was in appreciation of seven years of dedicated service for the city of Greer from April 2007 to January 8th, 2015, for Don Holloman here at Greer, South Carolina, this is the 13th day of January 2015. If you would join me in the round of applause, Don Holloman. And as a token of our appreciation, I want to thank you for this gift, and thank you for what you've done, and if you want to say a word, you might be very pleased. It's been an honor and pleasure, and we thank you, thank you for all you've done for us. I believe your wife is with us this evening, and we want to thank you for sharing in with us for the last seven years, and wish you well as I hear you're headed to the lake as soon as we rain the last few ounces out of this. Thank you, Mayor Danah. I got some wrapped up in the moment. I forgot some other business that we needed to do, and that is recognize the folks that are staying with us but have reached a milestone in terms of their length of service, and there are four or five such people, but we have two that we want to recognize this evening that were able to join us tonight. And let me read a resolution recognizing the many Greer city employees. This says, "Whereas the city of Greer does recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Gary Melton has served in the Recreation Department for five years, Scott Rubbers has served in the Police Department for five years, and Richard Watson has served in the Public Services Department for 15 years, and whereas these employees have served in distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled, wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees with distinguished and dedicated service for which they have performed. If further resolved that the city of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and administrative day off with a approved date the 13th day of January 2015." I would like to ask Mr. Richard Watson, and if he would, please come forward, and Mr. Scott Rogers, please come forward.
Well, thank you for your service. I thank you. I appreciate it. Scott, thank you, sir, as well. You're a man of energy, by the way.
We work hard to make sure that we equip our workers with the best technology and equipment that we can and training that we could provide, but without a doubt, our greatest asset is indeed our employees, and the folks that day in and day out make this city run, and we are indebted to them for all that they do, from those that help maintain these beautiful facilities to those that protect our rights and ensure those. And to each and every employee in the department in the city, we thank you as a council for all that you do, and it is indeed our pleasure when we have an opportunity to recognize those milestones that you reach with your employment with the city. And for Don Holloman, Don, indeed, hats off. Thank you very much. Don has helped guide us through a period of phenomenal growth, and he has seen among that period of time, one of, if not the largest, and certainly the fastest project that we have ever pulled off is the city in terms of the port, and that was a great engineering feat, but beyond that, it was a great example of pulling a team together, of delegating the responsibilities among that team, and making sure that everybody pulled their fair share in terms of that one project, but yet we didn't forget the people that were doing the single projects everywhere else in the city, and made sure that things continued to run smooth in that regard. And we have been recognized by the Port Authority, by the Municipal Association, and others within the state for that particular project, and certainly by no means is that the only thing we've worked on in the last seven years, but certainly a crowning achievement for anybody in that position. Don has also guided us on a road program that now sees the city streets in as good a shape as they have ever been, and that is an accomplishment as well to even the state of roads in our state. And, Don, we thank you for all that you've done, and all that you will continue to do here as we continue to seek a worthy replacement for you, and thank you. We appreciate it. With that, then, we'll move to departmental reports. You'll see departmental reports listed among other activities there in your agenda this evening. As usual, administrator or department heads will be glad to help you with questions in regards to that. And Mr. David Seifert joins us this evening for a financial activity update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we've gotten through the holidays, and we're bringing to you the financial summary report for November 30th of 2014. Beginning with the general fund, we have revenue recorded $2,325,815 and expenditures of $6,295,400. That amount is 10% under budget on the expenditure side. Referencing to dashboards, we have a negative variance on the revenue side of $92,942. On the expenditure side, a positive variance of $1,090,956, and those two combined together gives us an overall positive variance of $998,014. The cash balance for November 30th for the general fund is $2,894,743. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue recorded of $707,927 with expenditures of $78,722, and at this time for the hospitality fund, that is 37% under budget, and has a carry-on cash balance at November 30th of $1,058,659. And finally, in our stormwater fund, we have revenue recorded of $37,421, expenditures of $47,364 at November 30th, that is 26% under budget, and that fund carries a cash balance at November 30th of $865,066. As always, we'd be happy to take any questions you might have tonight or any time in the future.
Counsel?
David, on the hospitality fund, on the revenue side, where do we stand as far as the percentage where we're supposed to be at this point?
In that one line item for the revenue for the hospitality, and that is on page one if you want to reference the budget report, that one line item is at 53%, and for November we should be at 58%, so we're 5% over budget.
So we're taking in 5% more than what we felt we were?
Through November 30th.
Right.
For that pro-rated chair through November 30th.
Others?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate the information.
I have a question for about the fire department report.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the November, the total calls. How has the number of calls changed since we instituted the screening of the medical calls?
We can get you the data to show the difference of the period when the change was made, so we can certainly show that. We know that there is a decrease in the number of those calls as well, so as we look at from year to year, that is one of the footnotes that we certainly put on that, is that there was a change in the types of calls that we're dispatching and rolling those trucks on those. Chief, you may have some more specific data, and we can certainly get you those numbers that will show the decrease in call volume as a result of that change.
Just back on my year-end numbers, we used to have about 3300, 3500, and we took in about 4500 dollars publicly for this year, so if you need to make a difference, we'll have to deal with it.
Okay. Appreciate it. Glad to see the platform finally back.
Yes. Back in service.
Great. Others? We'll move to the administrators' report, then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year. Glad that we are able to approach 2015. We have many, many things on our plate as we approach this new fiscal year, this new calendar year for us, and we will keep you informed as we're working through that. There'll be a number of things this evening that I want to report to you, as well as I'll be asking for some items in executive session, since we have not met in about six weeks, so that we can get you all up to speed on what's taking place there. One of the things that I would like to at least initially say is to also echo the comments regarding Don Holloman. It was my pleasure to be involved in that hiring process some seven years ago, seven plus years ago, when Don was making a decision to relocate to South Carolina, and we were glad that he chose Greer as the stop for him, and a variety of stops through his career. And while we have the opportunity to recognize him for seven years of service here, it is important to note that Don has dedicated 47 years of his life to the profession of local government engineering, and it is that wealth of experience and knowledge that has made him such a valuable member of our team, and it certainly is what is making it very difficult to look for someone to fill those very big shoes. So we want to say thank you to Don again. And to give you some idea of what he has been involved in this year, I thought it was nice as we approached 2015 to share with you kind of how we wrapped up the volume of work and the value of work that runs through our Building and Development Standards Office. In 2014, we issued permits in just under $1 billion. That is with a B. $97.5 million worth of construction valuation in 2014. Commercial valuation was at $51.6 million, residential value at $44 million, including all permits that were issued in that, and also 216,000 starts during that prior year as well. So you can see that we are obviously post-recession. Our economy is very strong for us here in our community. The groundwork has been laid. There's good infrastructure that is in place for continued development, and while we see projects like the inland port and others, what that certainly gave us the ability to demonstrate to our development community, to those folks who are looking to invest in Greer, South Carolina, is that we have processes in place to take care of how they do business. We recognize that time is money in the development community. We have a role to play here in life and health safety, but we have learned some tools. We have learned some things of how to expedite that process, and that is making it very attractive to the development community as they look at locations where they want to invest as well. So again, Don, thank you for your part in that, and it's very, very good news for us to share with our elected officials and with our community as well. There are a number of things that will be taking place over the next several weeks, and one of those that is fast coming to our attention is next Monday is our annual Martin Luther King luncheon and program. Councilman Griffin is extremely involved in that program and has been for a number of years. He invites you, and we all invite you, to come and to participate in that program on Monday. It will be held here in our facilities. A ticket is held for you. We just need to know whether or not your plans will allow you to attend. It is a wonderful annual tradition for us now in our community as we celebrate the life and the work of Dr. Martin Luther King, and this year is no exception, so we're looking forward to that again this year. Mr. Griffin, are there maybe any additional comments that you may like to make in regards to our program on Monday?
I'd just like to thank Mayor and Council for their continued support, you know, for our program. It's been a good draw the last couple of years. We've had an outstanding participation from the community, so I want to thank you for your continued support for that.
Very good. Look forward to Monday's program. Over this weekend, some of you will be attending also. Our police department is holding their annual awards banquet. That will be this Saturday evening. I know you've communicated with the police department if your plans allow you to attend that event. As well as next Thursday, we are sponsoring and participating with the Greater Greer Chamber of Commerce for their annual meeting. As you are aware, Jim Newsom, the president and CEO of the South Carolina Port Authority, will be the featured speaker at that program. We will, again, we are a sponsor, and we'll be participating at that program next Thursday. Many of you have indicated your attendance plans, but if I've not received those yet and you desire to attend that program, we have room and space and availability to accommodate that, so we are looking forward to a wonderful evening next Thursday as the business community of Greer gathers for that annual meeting. Looking forward to that. Do have some good news. I'm constantly asked from folks about what the status is on the Memorial Drive Bridge, Memorial Drive Extension Bridge, that has been out for about six months now. As many of you may be aware, last week, the Chamber of Commerce sponsored in their first Friday event, our legislative delegation. And introducing our legislative delegation, one of the things that we were made aware of, if you haven't already been made aware, is that one of our representatives is now the chairman of the House Education and Public Works Committee, and that is Representative Rita Allison. That is a very prestigious, very high-ranking, and very powerful committee within the South Carolina House of Representatives. She chairs that committee, and another member of our delegation, Tommy Stringer, chairs a subcommittee on that committee as well. They have both been working with us on the bridge project, but I had an opportunity to really have Representative Allison's ear last week. That was on Friday, and today I received a telephone call and also a confirmation from the Chief of Staff for the South Carolina Department of Transportation informing us that work will begin on that bridge on February 1st, and it is scheduled for completion on April 1st. It is worthy to note that in South Carolina politics, that position and seniority still has a place. We thank Representative Allison for her great support. She called me personally this afternoon, and then very shortly after that, I received the communication from the Chief of Staff at the Department of Transportation, letting us know that this was a high priority for Representative Allison, and that they were looking forward to completion of that project, and so are we. So with that being said, you are aware that as a result of the flooding that took place with that event, we have been working for some time in developing some new communication tools with our traveling public, and one of the things that we have been able to come up with is some new warning devices that we would place in those areas, and I'll ask Glenn Pace if he would give us a little background and kind of unveil some of that new communication.
Thank you, Mr. Airwood. As you know, that event took place in August, and city staff at that time during that event handled that event quite well, I would like to add. I was there out with them also as being flood plain manager and checking our areas and seeing where flood waters were and those type of things. And after that event, you know, we don't let things fly. City staff has been real active in creating a study committee about improving the ways we can respond to these type incidents and all. And through the brainstorming efforts of those and others, we developed some signs that hopefully we'll be establishing in some of those flood hazard areas so that people will be aware, be alerted what's going on during these events without us having to have sometimes the availability of a set of blue lights there or other things until we can get those things in place. So through efforts of public services and others being involved, this isn't a big unveiling here, but we thought it was nice that we would be able to provide some signage in these areas as you approach them, always constantly being able to alert that this is a flood-prone area, and that you be aware that during heavy rains, things can change quite rapidly. What we'd be able to do is someone would be able to pull out, release the mechanism on this sign, and therefore you would have a notification very quickly that, "Oh, it is here." The high water is there, and the logo that we use in the flood management world is "Turn Around, Don't Drink," and you'll hear that a lot on weather forecasts and other things that happen throughout our community, but we're good. We'll be doing these, this sign here was produced by our Public Works Department with, again, technology, mayor that you so mentioned earlier, by having that available to us, we're able to create this type of sign, and we're looking to do it. We just wanted to bring this here to you tonight so you can kind of get an idea for it, and I thank you for this.
We appreciate it. If you will turn that so our audience can see it as well, too. I know they would like to view it as well, too, and we thank you all for your work on that. Great job, and it looks like a potential submission for a municipal association or whatever. We'll keep that in mind.
We'll keep that in mind. I'll go ahead and tell our ultimate goal with you.
Thank you, sir.
Again, we thank you.
Very good. Just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we are continuing to follow up on those types of events and look for ways that we can improve communication to, again, to our traveling public. A couple of things just to make you aware of. If you have not received yet, you will shortly. It is that time of year that I will start reminding you of your state ethics reports. What is important this year to note is that they have, again, changed the deadline for submission. Those reports are now due by March 30th, and that has changed a little bit over the years, and that is a new deadline this year. So again, I will continue to remind you because we don't want anyone to get caught up in that. Have we distributed them yet? Have they been distributed to council members yet? Okay, then we'll make sure those are placed in your box. If Tammy doesn't know about it, it hasn't happened, trust me. That means it's sitting on my desk, and I was aware of it, and it ain't going any further. But we will get those distributed to you, and you're familiar with them, but anything that we can do to assist you with those, we will. As you know, those are submitted online, and the new deadline this year is March 30th. We are continuing to work with Kim Lee Horn and their Economic Development Office, the vision of Kim Lee Horn, on the market analysis for our Allen Bennett Memorial Hospital project. They have completed their fieldwork. They have submitted a rough draft of that. Myself and Mr. Deaton are in the process of reviewing that, and then we will have some follow-up conversation with them, and then we'll bring that to you for presentation in executive session at your next meeting. So we're completing that at this point. If you'd like to have a little preview look at it, that's fine, too. We don't mind doing that, but we want to make sure that everything that we asked them to include in that study is being included, and then once you've had an opportunity to review that and give direction to us for that property, then we'll be in a position to make that more public. But that report is now completed in draft form, and we're ready to share that at our next meeting. Also, we've been looking at dates for your annual planning retreat. Also, we've been looking at dates for your annual planning retreat. The mayor and I have had an opportunity to look at when that may best be conducted. As scheduling for a number of things have worked for us and communication with many of you as well, we are proposing that we would do that the last week of February. It is the week of your last meeting in February. This is one week later, Ms. Booker, than we had originally had envisioned. What we are trying to get a little feedback from you this year as we make a decision, we've never had our planning retreat in a week where we've met on that Tuesday evening. So we're trying to determine whether or not we would like to incorporate the regular meeting as part of the planning retreat. That could mean that we meet earlier in the day that day. We may take a break, have the actual council meeting, conclude our work the next day. It could mean that we have our regular council meeting on Tuesday. We may decide to have some work either in the evening or during the day, at any other part of that week. We may choose to have some executive session for personnel-related matters, potentially even on that Saturday morning. There's a great deal of flexibility, but we are looking at that week of February the 24th. That's that Tuesday. I believe that's the Tuesday. Yeah, the 24th is that Tuesday. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is the 25th, 26th, 27th. Saturday is the 28th. We've blocked that time out, but we do need to inquire of you. As the mayor and I have looked at it, the mayor's instruction to me was, let's go back to council and see if there is a more, a schedule that is more preferred than another, or if there's a format that's more preferred than another so that we can accommodate. We've been receiving some information from you about some items that you'd like to have included in this year's planning retreat, and we are working with all of those suggestions and believe we can get those incorporated. But the format is what we needed a little more direction on. So, Mayor, I'll really refer that back to you for guidance and direction on how we should proceed.
Appreciate it. As the administrator has mentioned, we're just looking at all of the options, and it did occur to us that with a meeting scheduled that week, that it might be of interest to you that we possibly meet for lunch that Tuesday and kick off our planning retreat, have an afternoon of sessions, then hold our regularly scheduled meeting, and then finishing up with a pretty full day on Wednesday. I know that's in the middle of the week, but also it would help us keep from going into the end of the week that we have in the past, and on schedule-wise, if that's better or worse for you, but we're just trying to, in some regards, offer an attempt to kill two birds with one stone if we can. So just wanted some input in that regard. How much should we do? I like earlier rather than later, but maybe if we want to have that meeting to end that day, there's any way to...
Well, we'll sort of look at the agenda. Absolutely. And there may be, you know, maybe some items that might be pertinent to whatever we're going to talk about. If not, we'll look at how essential those are for that meeting that evening and maybe can push them back another week. We'll definitely look at the agenda. May even be able, as the administrator, as Mr. Drew said, to spend some time in executive session on some issues that may be relevant to our discussions as well, too, and go from there. We'll move in that regard.
Very good. That works well. That would conclude my report. I would ask council's consideration. I do have a number of items to ask you to allow me some discussion on in executive session. Two of those are personnel matters, one relative to our fire department, one in our Building and Development Standards Department. Also, one matter of economic development concerning potential funding of a project, and two legal matters, one involving property and one involving a lease. Two personnel, one economic development, and two legal.
Good. Thank you, sir, for that update. And with that, then we will move to the boards and commissioners. We still seek a replacement for District III, and I understand that is in the works, and so we will look forward to a recommendation in the future in regards to filling that seat on the Recreation Association Board of Trustees. With that, then, we'll move to items of new business. The first and final reading of Resolution 1, 2015. As we start the new year, this is a resolution adopting the City of Greer Annual Safety Statement. The South Carolina Municipal Insurance Trust and South Carolina Municipal Insurance and Risk Financing Fund requires that the City of Greer adopt an annual safety statement. With that, chief, floor is yours.
I could just add that I'll expand a little bit more on it. Our annual commitment to safety is part of our guidelines created that we require each year to have an annual safety statement prepared, put in front of all safety managers for all employees received in the city's safety and performance.
As you all are aware, this is part of our overall program to make safety a priority in the city and to be part of our safety program that is potentially beneficial to our employees in more ways than just keeping them safe. That statement is included. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions of the chief in that regard or the administrator? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Chief will stay with us because we have the first and final reading of Resolution 2-2015, Resolution to Update the City of Greer Bloodborne Pathogen Standards to Comply with Occupational Safety and Health Administration Requirements. Chief?
Yes, sir. Every year, we're required by OSHA to have a review of the local pathogen standard. There is no changes in our program this year, amendments or additions to the program. Basically, that statement is stating that no change remains in the policy of the program this year.
Heard the report from the chief. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, chief. We have the first reading. I think we've got, we've got the, I'm mistaken, oh, no, excuse me. It's ordinance. We've changed from resolutions to ordinance. We have the first reading of ordinance, number 1-2015. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real estate inside the City of Greer. City of Greer owns a strip of land which is intended to be a public alley on the back portion of the former DND Ford property. The city actually took action in 1975 to close the alley and deed the property to the Davenport title. However, for whatever reason, that never occurred, so the current property owner, Davenport Properties LLC, now has the property under contract and needs to clear up this title issue. Additional information from the administrator in this regard?
That's rather self-explanatory, but on the advice of our legal counsel and your staff, we are asking council to authorize us to execute a quick claim deed conveying the alleyway that was originally approved by city council in 1975 but not recorded.
See, this comes as well with the recommendation and interest from Daniel Hughes, who is part of our legal team. I'll entertain a motion to receive. I have a motion and a second of ordinance number 1-2015. Any comment in that regard, questions?
This is property on Way Hampton.
Yes, sir. The alley was at the rear of the property. That was, it was never a through alley. It was more of a stubout alley, probably used for garbage collection or something in early years. But we closed that alley back in the 1960s and then conveyed the property to them in '75. It's recorded on the deeds, but it was not recorded as action other than a motion made by council, but this requires an ordinance by council for to clear up the deed.
I asked that because some of us remember when they were downtown.
Yes, this is the Way Hampton Boulevard property.
I have a motion in a second. Further questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, this evening, we have a discussion in regards to our Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual and some revisions in that regard, and I believe that the administrator and Ms. Alicia Williamson have information in that regard for us. Let's see.
Yes, sir. We did provide you with some narrative information there, as well as you have received the document with a narrative identifying the proposed changes. One of the things that we are required to do periodically as part of our risk management is every two years, we have legal counsel, an HR legal counsel, review our personnel policies and procedures manual to offer recommendation of any amendments or changes that we should make to that as well. And then we also sit back and then we look at our practices, what we do, how we do things, and we find that over time, there needs to be periodically amendments to that as well. I've asked Ms. Williamson if she would please to address council this evening to give you a little more detail of what we did, how we did it, and why we did it.
The majority of changes that were made to policy and procedures manuals were either based on changes on new laws or laws that have changed or have, just things that have changed, recommendations in our labor attorney based on case law, and to clarify certain policies and procedures. For example, because of the Affordable Care Act, in Employment Satisfaction, we had to change that employees that work these 30 hours are generally eligible for fringe benefits, but to clarify that eligible employees have to work 40 hours a week for vacation and sick time and holiday pay. A few changes that I would like to point out. Page one of the personnel policy additions, revisions, and additions under recruitment and appointment, we changed that all applications will be retained for three years instead of two years. Federal law requires that we keep applications for two years, but the statute of limitation on those causes of action is three years. Also, on page three, sick leave, added that fellow职员 who appear for work for calls to the employer to notify the city having absence for three consecutive days would be considered job abandonment, and the employee would be administratively terminated. This was added to help protect the city in this episode. On page four, in climate weather, we add to how employees would be advised of opposing delays in cases of climate weather. Previous policy did not address this issue. Also, on page four, under the city vehicle and equipment, it was added an employee will comply with all IRS guidelines in regards to take-home vehicles. Those who do not serve a public safety position are charged for the use of take-home vehicle. Last night, page four, under the tuition reimbursement, it was added that whether employees voluntarily or involuntarily lost employment with the city for a within 36 months, upon the completion of a degree, that they will repay the city for the amount of reimbursement. Previously, it only had to be paid back if the employee lost voluntarily. On page five, under the personal appearance, it was added that uniform would not be worn during off-duty hours unless permitted by the city. And also, on page five, was added under the auto-go accident, property damage section, that an employee who is determined by the city to be a felon for an accident with any city-owned vehicle may be responsible for payment of the city deductual and may be assessed full cost. These are just some of the additions, provisions, and additions that I wanted to point out. Does anyone have any questions?
Again, we provided to council in your package a narrative of, by section of the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual, any changes. We did not do a strike-through and an underline format, which you would typically see if there was a complete revision, that we would repeal the old policy and replace it with a new one. In our case, we're looking at identifying, highlighting, and identifying those in bold, the changes that we made to the respective sections. So you can see that anything from recruitment and appointment, pre-employment, medical examinations, drug testing, psychological examinations, immigration, employee orientations, employment status, nepotism, secondary employment, salary basis policy, work breaks, holidays, sick leave, military leave, witness duty leave, private litigation, business-related absence, vacation leave, climate weather, use of vehicles, general training, personnel records, mutual reference, tuition reimbursement, grievance procedure, employee grievance committee, wellness, automobile program, employee drug use, drug testing policy, and tobacco use policy, as well as charitable activities and solicitation. We have provided the Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual as proposed in its entirety, and if you've had an opportunity to look through any of the proposed changes, we certainly are prepared to address the rationale for those changes. Otherwise, we would make a staff recommendation to council that we would adopt this for revision to then roll out to our employees as a revised Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual.
Counsel, questions of the administrator, Ms. Williamson, in that regard? Comments? Do I hear a motion to affirm changes?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any follow-up in that regard?
I looked through these as best I could, and I couldn't see any, some kind of standard bringing up to date with the law and stuff, so I didn't see any.
We weren't adding benefits or reducing benefits and those types of things that would require different type. These are day-to-day activity administrative functions with our employees. Yes, sir.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, in executive session this evening, we have two personnel matters, one economic development matter, and two legal matters to consider. Did I hear a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, in executive session, we have considered two personnel matters, one economic development matter, and two legal matters. We've taken no action in regard to those matters. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Stay in the adjournment.